...of the Tiverton School Committee of January 14th. If everyone could rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have no one signed up for open forum this evening. I do want to take a moment to welcome Town Councilor, Mr. David Perry, to the meeting. He is our school committee liaison, and I'm glad to see him here this evening, as well as Mr. Aruda and Ms. Donnelly Roach. We'll go into the consent agenda. We have just one item tonight, the enrollment report for January. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. For chairperson's remarks, I really just have a short remark this evening. We did hold the joint Town Council, School Committee, Budget Committee meeting here in the library just about an hour ago. I think it all went well. The three bodies were all represented, and that is the official kickoff to the budget season here in Tiverton. And that's really all I have to say on it. There was no major announcements or anything. Moving on to old business for consideration and possible vote. We have approved homeschool requests for the 2024-25 school year. Mrs. Craver.
There are just two names on our list this month. Both of these families have provided all the requirements. These students have been homeschooled in the past and just haven't provided us with the information, and through multiple attempts to try and reach them to obtain it, we were able to do so. So, these are not new to homeschooling.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the homeschool requests?
I'll make a motion to approve homeschool requests.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We'll now move on to the FY '25 budget versus actual variance analysis. Mr. Andrade?
We'll get into the budget a little later on in another agenda item, but if there's any specific questions, I can take those now.
And for the purpose of the audience, what we are looking at right now is the monthly budget to actual report that Mr. Andrade has been compiling. We do take this in once a month. It will, from here, go to the Town Council for their review at their second meeting. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none.
Just high level. Budget is what? Top level. This was our budget thirty...
So, the adopted budget was $35.8 million, and we're looking at a final budget of 36, almost $36.2 million.
Thank you.
Which, I'll get into that later.
Yep. The $35,792.61.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And year-to-date, we have a total spend of $14,643,996.
Yep, about forty percent has been spent to date.
Thank you.
And we're how many months? What are we through the year?
Six months.
July, August, September, October?
Halfway through.
Halfway through.
Yep.
So, we spent forty percent? We're fifty percent through the year, but that's all timing?
Yes, yeah. A lot of it's timing, mostly because the benefits are kind of about six to eight weeks behind when we finalize everything through payroll, and it gets, you know, general entry to our accounting system. But we highlight a little bit of that on the bottom line there for outstanding invoices and committed orders.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business. We need to accept the donation of a storage container from the Ranger PTO. Dr. Sankione?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the Ranger PTO would like to donate a storage container, help take some of the equipment that's currently on the stage in the Ranger Cafeterium, and some of the other recessed equipment out there. I ask you to accept this with gratitude.
Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
Motion to accept the donation.
Second. Does anyone have any discussion? Do we have any idea what the monetary value of this donation is?
Probably about $3,000 usually one of these go for. Three to four thousand.
Moving forward, if we could get that included on these donation artifacts so that, you know, we have that as part of the record, that would be good. So, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you very much to the Ranger PTO for always taking care of our kids. Next up, we have accepted donation of a storage container from Gary Monahan. And Mrs. Craver, Mrs. Craven isn't able to be with us this evening, so Dr. Sankione?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Gary Monahan would like to donate a storage container to put all the track equipment that's in there, all of our hurdles and mats, some of that's outside as we speak. So, again, I ask you to accept this with gratitude.
Do I have a motion to accept this donation of an outside storage container?
Motion to accept the storage container.
Do I have a second? Second. Do we have any questions?
I just have a question. Do you, Dr. Sankione, do you know if we still have that? It was like a trailer down at the middle school. I think they used to store, if I remember, football equipment. Is that still there?
It is.
I was just curious, thank you.
Did we not receive a donation of a shed as well at the middle school? Is this going to be in addition to?
We received a shed, I believe it was two years ago when we began the Boys' Baseball and Softball Program that we brought to you.
Was it the softball shed?
Yeah, softball and baseball.
That was a brand-new shed that Mr. DeCortis got.
Right.
This looks like it's for the high school.
This is for the high school, yes.
This is high school.
It just is coming from a middle school.
Right.
Oh, from the middle school. Thank you for clarifying. It'd help me if I read. Okay, got it. And I do see mention of the fact that it could possibly eliminate the need for the 40-foot container that's currently in the parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Well, it'd be good to see that go. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, accept donation from Amicable Church to the GSA Club. Dr. Sankione?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the Amicable Church has donated $600 to the Tiverton High School GSA Club. I ask you to accept this with gratitude.
Do we have a motion to accept this donation from the Amicable Church of $600 to the GSA Club?
Motion to accept the donation of $600 to the GSA Club High School.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you to the members of the Amicable Church. And before I forget, thank you also to Mr. Monahan for your donation of the container for the high school. All right, next up, approved ski trip to Wachusett.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the Tiverton High School Ski Team Club, I should say, would like to take a trip out to Wachusett. They're still working on a date, obviously, weather conditions and snow conditions play into this, but they'd like to get your approval to take this trip, which certainly would be on a non-school day.
Do I have a motion to approve the Tiverton High School Ski and Board Club trip to Wachusett?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you for clarifying that this would definitely be on a non-school day, much as we all enjoy taking a day off sometimes. And I do wish for them good snow. So, all those in favor? Thank you. I'm going to get through this quick tonight. Oh, wait, now we have the heating system. All right, heating repair cost estimates and funding plan. Mr. Andrade?
So, we had two issues, one being at Fort Barton and Tiverton High School. As most of us know, we had Fort Barton, there was two vendors that came out. Train was the first vendor that came on property for the first two days of the issue. Their cost was approximately $2,000. And then ICM Mechanical threw two other subcontractors at a cost of $20,000. So, total at Fort Barton was $22,000. I won't get into that whole plan as we, it was discussed last meeting, but if you have any questions, please let me know. I'll continue on and then take some questions. Tiverton High School was two issues, first being a pressure and temperature low reading, temperature reading at the boiler. It was determined the control module and valve needed to be replaced. This cost was approximately $9,000. Luckily, this was a little different than Fort Barton because the high school was able to, excuse me, the contractor was able to bypass the system at the high school to still offer some heat that was, you know, still able to keep the kids in the building at a great temperature. Another issue arrived at the same time at the high school where a rooftop compressor had failed. This works as a rooftop mini-split. For you that are not familiar with the type of rooftop compressors we have, so it's basically a rooftop mini-split for the front office area of the high school. Due to the lead time on parts, we received a few quotes within 24 hours and awarded the job again to ICM Mechanical. That was $13,000 to replace the compressor. So, altogether, the final cost between the two facilities was $44,000. Within our budget, we had originally budgeted $5,000 for HVAC. Unfortunately, we had to reallocate $40,000 to come up with the $45,000 until we just got the bills recently over the last five days or so. So, we'll get, you know, I'll go more into that in item I of the agenda, but any questions at this time?
I do have one. The rooftop mini-split work. Did that piece of equipment have anything to do with the large project we just completed
That's the sixth year, yeah.
Those were the parts installed when the new heating system was installed.
And they are no longer under any kind of warranty?
We checked that. We had actually Ben check the contract.
We checked that, and we actually had Ben look at the contract, too.
Okay. So, you know, let's keep this in mind, grand total $44,000, $42,000, sorry, that we were not expecting, although, you know, given the age of the buildings and the obvious fact that warranties don't last forever, these types of repairs are not going to be considered unusual, and we need to keep that in mind as we move forward. And I do know we'll speak to it again further in the agenda. Does anyone else have any questions about these specific items?
Just with this price tag that we're looking at, I'm hoping we can explore what a service contract would be, just weighing out the cost-benefit of what would a service contract cost versus we just spent $44,000 on two buildings. So, definitely in the future, we'd like to know more about that, and also to kind of keep it on the radar, a contingency plan going forward. So, if we're in this situation again, we have somewhat of a playbook so that we can pivot quickly if, you know, God forbid, we had to move kids or shut a building down.
Yeah, I'll get into that a little more shortly, but we do have a little contingency when it comes to spare parts. However, what's the appetite due to what's being discussed shortly?
So, I was more meaning like a business continuity plan, you know, like quick reference of...
Yeah, I was going to say Peter and Sarah would speak on the contingency of the students, yeah.
Thank you.
And we had that, yeah.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? I don't believe we need to take a vote on this, do we?
No.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention. Next item, request to go out to bid for superintendent search consult. The school committee met in executive session last Thursday, and we have decided to ask the district to put out a bid request for a superintendent search company, which I know several exist, consultant to help us. We did hire such a consultant the last time when we hired Dr. Sankione, and I think that the process that the consultant helped us to go through worked very nicely. I know that the consultant we used last time around is no longer available. However, the request will be for us to take a vote this evening to ask the administration to put out a bid for a search consult. So, do I have any, do I have a motion to put out that item to bid?
I'll make a motion that we go out to bid for a superintendent search consult.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? No?
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay. That's four to one. All right, thank you. Next up, adjusted FY '25 capital request for the next town council meeting. Mr. Andrade?
So, in front of you this evening, we have some requests for permission to ask the Town Council to fund some upcoming capital projects. This is kind of a two-part request where most of these would be great to be done in FY '25. A couple of these can fall into FY '26, but that's summer of '26, why school is not in session. With that, I'll lead it off with the first one. As you already know, you've approved this one, but I just re-added it to this memo, re-requesting permission from last round to request the replacement of 11 exterior doors. There was a company that came out and took a look at all the doors, and there was kind of different phases. The first phase was just recently completed, and now it's been about 20 months since, you know, that review occurred, and unfortunately, we have more problematical doors that need to be addressed because we're spending, custodians are spending a lot of hours with continual repairs and adjustments to these doors. Some of these doors are doors that are also being used by outside schools, such as the town basketball program and the farmer's market. So, it would be ideal to replace these doors, some of these doors as quickly as possible. The next item is wiring and cabling. This is to enhance the internet with the possible 50%. It's not possible, but it's a 50% reimbursement if funded using the E-rate funding. So, we would apply for the E-rate funding, and you have 50% reimbursement. That cost is $20,000. Tennis courts are in desperately need of repair. We looked at the option of repair and renovation. Renovation was, you know, quite frankly, way too high, and the repair would give us a good amount of useful life at the cost of $108,000. The field repairs, these are all athletic fields. We want to approve the field conditions with much-needed attention to aeration, repair, and overseed and fertilizing. Boys' bathroom petitions at all the elementary schools at a cost of $35,000. Due to the years of service, the boys' bathroom positions at all elementary schools need to be replaced. This has been on the plan for quite a while now, and it's here to hopefully be accepted. The next one is paint all the interior walls and doors at the middle school at a cost of $10,000. The walls continue to be washed and cleaned, but really need an update, paint to all interior. Next one is touch views in all the classrooms. This is, our educators have requested this as an essential way to provide the necessary technology to teach our students. That would be at a cost of $265,000. And lastly, electricity at our lower fields at a ballpark estimate of $30,000 for trenching and running electric wires to the lower fields to support our athletic teams that utilize those fields, such as the baseball fields. Total request this evening is $614,407. I will lead you to the next page as well to give you an update of where we stand with the previous approved projects by the school committee and Town Council. So, as you can tell, most of these have been finished, and there's a couple that are still in the works that should be finished in the next couple of months. So, right now, we're estimating a remaining return to the Town Council of about $293,000. With that return, plus the reimbursements from RIDE at 35%, with this request, the return and the reimbursement, you're talking about a net impact of about $54,000 in the
Do I have a motion for discussion purposes to approve this adjusted capital request?
Motion to approve this capital request? Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. I will open the floor to discussion. I have a number of questions, but I will also ask if any of my colleagues have questions. Justin, go ahead.
A bit unrelated, just when you spoke of exterior doors, you spoke about outside organizations using the buildings. Do we charge for that, the use of buildings?
Just custodial fees when...
Just the custodial, yeah.
Okay.
That's per policy.
Per policy, okay, thank you.
Elaine, do you have anything?
Well, I was going to ask Dr. Sankione, we don't charge out-of-town residents...
Just custodial fee.
Just the custodian's bill.
Almost there, Elaine?
Almost there, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Kim, do you have anything?
I wanted to ask about the doors. It seems like the doors keep coming up. How many doors are left to replace total?
Sure, so we have 11 documented on this form. You may recall, we had replaced, I think it was about 11 in the first round. The first 11 were doors that just weren't latching, were safety. This is the second set that was assessed. They're still fine, the safety is still there, but they're on a, you know, they're there within, predicted probably within a year, they'll be in that next phase where those first doors were. But from the analysis done by the consultant, once the second set is done, we should be fine for a while.
And the wiring and the cabling, you'll be replacing wires and cables for the internet?
Yeah.
And where is that, at the high school?
High school, middle schools, our two hubs.
Okay. And one last question. The touch views for all the classrooms, the teachers are requesting that?
They are.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Deb, do you have anything?
Yep, so, just in general, this is going to the council for funding for this year? So, what's the timing of this?
We are going to ask them to be funded this year. They might ask us to do a priority list. It's just we don't know when the next capital meeting will be, so I think it's good to get out front and give our requests ahead of time. It all depends how they want it, you know, like, for instance, touch views would be done during the summer. So, we would want that done during the summer for the teachers to come into the new classroom in September. How they want to fund it, because that would be FY '26, would be essentially up to them.
So, we have had, you know, haven't had discussions, but if we have discussions regarding FY '26 capital requests, those will then go before them next year? So, is that...
Based on...
No, I would say these are the most critical things, and I'd go back to a point that Mr. Andrade made, that when you take into account what we're returning on the last and the amount of money that we're getting back in reimbursements, really, we're requesting like $60,000.
Yeah, go through that math for me. So, we, $799...
So, only $754,000 was reimbursable?
Gotcha.
So, if you minus the $754 from the $294, that would be returned?
Yep.
Would be approximately $161,000 of 35%.
$754 minus $294 is what? It's not 100.
That's not math that I...
I'm just trying to make the math work in my head. I mean, I hear what you're saying. So, we, $754, we return $294, that's $460, and of the $754, we're getting reimbursed 35%?
35%.
Which is $264.
Yep.
So, basically, $754,000 worth of, at least budgeted, are going to cost us at the end of the day after we return things, net is $196.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Gotcha. Just trying to make sure...
And then same thing with using the new projects if they were funded. Not all projects are reimbursable, but the ones that are.
And do we still have our building committee? Like, does this, are they dormant?
Well, they're still ready to be activated when we need them.
But this is all from prior priority lists?
Most of this is coming, and some of these I know you recognize, especially the Boys' partitions that's been on for years.
Yeah, tennis courts have been on.
Yeah, the tennis courts. There's a couple new ones on there, but all, you know...
I guess my concern, and we haven't talked about it yet, but, you know, we have talked about a couple of things that we wanted to make sure was in, were in the budget. For instance, we want new financial software, and that's crucial. So, if we request this and we don't talk about that, I guess we're going to, we'll miss our window on that. But, I mean, there's probably not much we can do because they're meeting before we will have had those opportunity to have those discussions.
Yeah, and I think that was the strategy that these projects we know of.
Yeah.
Put it on the, put it in front of them in January, and then come back for '26.
Okay.
I think that the approach then, because we went in front of them in December, and they approved the quote-unquote "emergency" funding for the chimney, and that was fine. And then they did say, "Come back to us the next time we meet," and that was going to be in January. And that was, at that time, the only thing on that list was the doors. I would like to kind of separate these to, you know, the doors are the number-one thing that we need, and that, you know, we're asking for that funding now. We do have urgent need for all of these other items as well, but I do fear that, and I don't know how much more they have to appropriate for this fiscal year. They're not very clear on that. And I, to Mrs. Polish's point, we do need accounting software. I'm not sure why it's not on here and why it's not prioritized.
It's not on here because we're still, I'm still going through the different software packages and getting quotes and whatnot. I just got the first one today, and obviously, I couldn't get it on today's agenda. I still need to speak to the vendor, which is happening on the 22nd, so I would know in the future, just not for today's meeting or the 27th.
Okay. The wiring and cabling, also, you're saying, "Enhance the internet with 50% reimbursement." So, is that $20,000 net of reimbursement, or is that the gross outlay with expected $10,000 coming back?
Yep, that would be, we would get about $10,000 back.
That's the gross.
And what is the source of that reimbursement?
E-rate.
E-rate?
Yep.
Does that reimbursement go to the town or to the schools?
To the schools, yeah. We've used it in previous projects.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, specifically to the school department, E-rate.
Okay, well, we have to be very upfront with that, that the Town Council isn't anticipating that their coffers are going to be improved. Then the, and forgive me, we just got these, the high school tennis courts. I know they've been in tough shape for a long time. We just spent a nominal amount to seal them a couple of years back. I see that on here, the repairs are $108,000. I know I've heard in the past that those courts perhaps were... I know I've heard in the past that those courts perhaps were not built in the optimal place, namely water situations underneath, so no matter what we put there, we're gonna be constantly looking to address. Does it make better sense to look at relocating the tennis courts to a new spot where we won't have these issues, instead of every few years spending big bucks?
We can share with you the quote that we've received from the company that's gonna do the repairs. They've recognized that problem and rectifying that with drainage and pipes underneath it as part of their solution.
Is that this estimate I seen here for two hundred and eighty thousand?
Oh, that, the two hundred and eighty would be the complete-
Yeah.
And truthfully, we were not expecting this list to be just handed to us this evening. I understood that the doors would be there, and perhaps the wiring as well. I didn't anticipate the rest of these. My personal feeling is that we need to talk about these some more. I would like us to, and I understand the summer issue with wanting to get work done during the summer, but I also think that we need a little bit more time to look at this more closely. For example, painting walls and doors at the middle school, is that just the cost of the paint? Or are we hiring people to paint?
That's contracted to do the work.
Our custodians can't paint?
They can, we've just, if you walk through the middle school now, you'll see the doors, their paint is off them, they're just, our custodians just never, they pick off a door here and there, it's just never enough time to get the complete school repainted.
Okay. And then, of course, the electricity for the lower fields, it just seems kind of a, it's a nice-to-have, not a priority. I would, I would like us to consider perhaps only submitting the first two items to the town council for the meeting on the twenty-seventh, and let's talk about the rest of these items and where we want to go with these for the next time around. And let's ask the town council when they anticipate having another round of casino funding discussions, so that we can be ready for it in advance without any of this last-minute thing.
Is the concern, though, that we're gonna miss the twenty-seventh window?
Yeah, to Diane's point, Diane's point, we'll just have to request a, ask them to post another capital meeting.
Okay.
And my understanding that this twenty-seventh window is only there to accommodate us for the door request, to be very honest.
Yeah, and we got notification of it late, too, so.
Yep. So what's happening with the sound system in the high school? Wasn't that something that was submitted to, to the town council?
That wasn't on the list last time, you're right.
Yeah, we've, we put that in a grant.
Oh, okay.
My only other concern is the lower fields. Again, nice-to-have, and it's the wishful to the town, to the school committee, excuse me. It's just right now, the way, you know, especially for the baseball team, there's no way to run pitching machines and other type items that we actually own in-house because of the wiring. So I don't know if that's something you guys want to consider, but again, it might be something you want to think about. But due to timing, that could be another concern. Everything else, I agree with waiting.
Just because you have to, like, get out there, get it done?
Baseball starting in a couple of months, yeah. And the reason that's a ballpark estimate is because this was a request that just came about as the A.D. was putting his spring calendar together with the coaches that he hired and et cetera, so.
Is the equipment new this year?
Uh, no.
So then how did they use it last year?
They use it in the gym in the spring, but they never took it out.
Yeah, yeah. They use it in certain areas, like if it's raining, they'll use it in the gym. And they never really used it down at the field. The concern is, you know, the coach could, you know, really, if you know baseball, he's gonna be throwing batting practice every year, every day. That's not what we want to happen, because-
No, we'll have to pay for a new shoulder.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the idea is, by having the electricity, we're able, the coach is literally able to throw batting practice at the baseball field and use it into the tunnel on the side as well. That happens during games and practices, so that's why it's a critical item.
So even though, you know, we have a number of things on here for obviously spring sports, you feel like if you had to prioritize, one and eight would be your priority? Just because of, well, one, obviously, but eight because of timing?
Yeah, one, you know, we'll say one, because it was already on here. Number two and number eight. Number seven, number six. Yeah, everything else is pretty much summer, right?
Except four. We gotta get going on four.
On four, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Number four will be a spring, a spring thing, in order to get the proper attention to the fields, to get them up to par, especially for the fall season. That's something that has to happen earlier than later.
Brendan, is the paint quote in here for the middle school?
No, not all the quotes are in here, so I will touch base on that. Thank you for reminding me.
Just, it does seem like a really low number. When we did the paint project at the middle school in 2018, our supplies alone were, I think, they were donated, but I think it was around nine thousand just for supplies.
Yeah, our director of maintenance, Mike Mendes, spoke to a couple interior painters, and that was kind of the ballpark estimate we got. And we're gonna get an actual quote, but it should not go over ten thousand, which is a good thing, based on that. The reason there's not other quotes in there is because some things, we still need to go out to bid and find vendors, but these are part of the five-year plan that's set for RIDE. So when you do your five-year plan, you have to estimate through an architect how much items are gonna be, so RIDE can fund it and budget for it.
Will we lose out on the E-rate if we don't do that?
No, just, it just stays there.
It just stays there, okay.
For future use, yeah.
So they don't, like, okay, you can only have so much a year, and-
You can build it up, but the thing is, whatever project you do, you're gonna pay half of it, and you can use E-rate for the other half.
This year, it was, it did go up to fifty percent. It was forty percent last year.
Nice.
Yeah.
So what do you, so-
Okay, what is the pleasure of the committee?
Yep. So Brendan, can you tell me again what you were recommending, one, two, four, and eight?
Do you agree with that, Peter?
I do.
Yep.
Or do we want to submit the entire list with prioritizing?
One, two, four, and eight.
That was a request I got last time when I went in front of the council. They asked me to prioritize, so that could be a suggestion to the school committee as well.
Can we perhaps rework this memo before it goes to the town council?
Absolutely.
With clear delineation of what those priorities are? And I, you know, going back to this topic of an accounting system, when do you anticipate having estimates put together on that?
I could have a great estimate for the twenty-seventh, but it wouldn't come before you, before the next town council meeting.
And again, we can ask the town council, you know, are they planning to, maybe we can start talking about, you know, should we be talking quarterly?
Yeah.
Not just for the school needs, but for the, you know, other town needs as well, you know, instead of just up in the air.
And to give you a range, it's gonna be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand for implementation. And part of that is, you know, we just don't, we have a skeleton crew. I would need a part-time consultant remotely to assist in that program, you know, and, excuse me, assist in that implementation, specifically because of Yucco, how Yucco is written.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Do we want to amend the motion to present the projects as recommended with one, two, four, and eight as priorities, and the remaining listed after?
Do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
All those in favor of the amended motion is, my Robert's rules, I didn't bring my Robert's rule for the dummy book with me.
You have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the, yeah, I don't remember.
Vote on the amendment, and then we will vote on the, on the original motion. So the amendment is, yes?
Can I ask a question real quick? I'm sorry. We just went online with the Finance Plus, what, three years ago? And we need another-
We were, yeah, it was three years ago, but we were forced to go on the Finance Plus because they bought out the previous company, Phoenix. Yeah, it wasn't, we didn't, from my understanding, I obviously wasn't here, but from my understanding, there wasn't really research, it was kind of a forced implementation.
And it's awful.
So it wasn't purchased?
It was.
It was.
But it like took over.
It took over.
Yeah.
Phoenix, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of like what they're doing with Paychex and Payfour.
Yeah, and usually when that happens, that probably would have been the, yeah, it's just not a user-friendly system.
I know, I've used it, yeah. It's terrible.
As you know, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It just seemed weird, like, three years ago, we were learning that, and then-
No, absolutely. I don't think anybody would ever want to have to replace accounting systems-
No.
-that frequently. But, you know, we are where we are, and the need for transparency-
And oversight, yeah.
And oversight and reporting is just too important for us to ignore.
Yeah, and I will be honest, selfishly, obviously, a new accounting system's gonna help me, because I've learned E-Finance, but by me being involved in the implementation, I'm gonna be proficient, where I'm not so much in E-Finance right now, because of my only fifty weeks.
You don't like building spreadsheets?
What is it?
You don't like building spreadsheets?
I, as you could tell, I do on Excel, but we're paying for a system, it should be able to give you a spreadsheet.
Agree.
And if you have questions on that system, you have to go to them, and they charge you, right? Every time you ask a question?
Honestly, I talked to a counterpart in Lincoln, who's the only other district with E-Finance, and they're as frustrated as we are in Tivannan. They take weeks to get back, the support is not good. Yeah.
Well, so to Diane's point, as soon as we have a number for that, let's make sure that whenever we, I mean, even if, even if it's just sending an email to the council, letting them know that this is very important to us, and we understand, they just had their discussion, but we want this to be looked at.
We can take it up on another meeting and vote on it.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can ask them to take it up in between.
Thank you.
It's just too important.
The one other thing, before we do take any votes, this capital funding summary, Brendan, the concept of remaining funds, if the project is complete, there are no funds remaining.
Correct.
And I don't want anybody on this committee to think that, oh, we have extra money, we can do something else with, because we've been told flat-out that that's not-
There's a resolution in place, correct.
So let's, you know, you may want to reconsider either putting that term, changing that term from remaining to perhaps budget delta or whatever, but let's not, anyone think that there is remaining funds, unless there is a project that is not yet complete.
Correct. There is, that is the case for some of them, but not, most of them are fully spent to date.
Oh, so there's remaining funds, and then some are just simply a budget surplus?
Yeah, the ones that are in the total committed area, we have not received an invoice for, so those are still, we haven't received an invoice because they're not completed, but those are, everything else is pretty much done, if you see no, no money in total committed.
Yeah, so to Diane's point, I guess, have remaining to be spent, and then maybe even budget surplus to be returned to council. I mean, let's just say what it is, so there's no question.
Yep. In agreement.
Okay, so back to the motion to amend the original motion of a total request of six hundred and fourteen thousand four oh seven, to prioritize that list and maintain the same number of six fourteen four oh seven. So do I have a second to amend that motion?
I thought Jocelyn or you mean-
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Pardon me. All those in favor? Okay. So now the final motion. Do we have a motion to accept this list of six hundred and fourteen thousand four oh seven for capital improvements to be reordered and prioritized prior to submission to the town council?
Yes, second motion.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five nothing, thank you. Discussion of potential FY twenty-five deficit, Mr. Andre.
Yep, so as you all-
Busy guy tonight.
Yeah, as you all received correspondence Friday afternoon, there was an email sent to the governing bodies, which include the town council president, the town administrator, obviously all the school committee members, including the Rhode Island Orders General and the Division of Finance Chief. So just to step back a second into earlier discussions that happened about two months ago, when we were finalizing the fiscal year twenty-four budget. As we know, fiscal year twenty-four budget ends in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, but when you're in accounting, it really doesn't end till December thirty-first. In our case, there was an order extension, so it's actually still going on with the idea that it's gonna be done by January thirty-first, or sooner. So during that time period from July through current, there was, there was overspending that happened in twenty-four that was recognized, and the school committee voted to adopt, excuse me, voted to allocate fund balance to fund this shortfall. At the same time that was happening, in May and June, before the shortfall, the budget was approved for FY twenty-five, part of the FY twenty-five budget was to use almost the same amount of one point five million in fund balance. So obviously, since that was used in twenty-four, that put a little strain on this current fiscal year twenty-five budget. So there's been, you know, the way the law is written is you have to put a corrective action plan together when you have a potential budget deficit. I like to call it a projected budget deficit, but potential is what they use in Rhode Island General Law. So the corrective action plan has been ongoing since I came on board, even before my time. Peter and team has assessed the situation, reviewed items, spending patterns, evaluated revenue streams, trying to find grants and whatnot. There were short-term goals already occurring, long-term goals occurring, and, you know, again, as I mentioned, exploring any external grants we can take, we can consider. So, so basically, at this point in time, we have, based on Rhode Island General Law, and I'll get into the deficit in a little bit, but based on Rhode Island General Law, the first step was to submit that memo that occurred Friday. Now we have thirty days to work with the town council to come up with a plan to basically pay for this potential liability that's coming in the next six months. Right now, our potential deficit is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars, and that makes up, the first one is three hundred thousand dollar budgetary shortfall for statewide transportation. The sped mileage increased by approximately fifty percent during the latest projections that were provided by RIDE in December. New enrollment occurred in the last couple of months, that was about a sixty-three percent Basically, to illustrate an explanation of the process, if two adults travel on Ripta from, say, Tivannan Bally's Casino to Lincoln Bally's Casino, for example, each purchase a ticket, there isn't a single ticket that covers everyone. Furthermore, distance and the most appropriate requirement, such as a bus monitor or CNA, has to come into effect based on their IEP. Additional costs for each passenger on the bus or van and their ticket price. So this is not a, you go pick up five students in Tivannan, you pay one cost. This is a cost per a student. That's the idea I'm trying to get on. But there's also processing fees, and those type of processing fees, I say that as my example, is, we're also paying for everything that RIDE has done over the last, you know, several months, such as cybersecurity, cameras, et cetera. So if they're putting in technology in the bus, the LEEs are taking on that cost, and those costs have skyrocketed. Obviously, cybersecurity and cameras have been a major technology in the world today. Legislation has formed a committee to review statewide transportation, so if you ever have a chance to watch- Legislation has formed a committee to review statewide transportation, so if you ever have a chance to watch those, um, watch those meetings online, as I have, um, they're very informative, and it gives you a really good open eye of how high this cost can be, and again, the point I'm trying to make is, three hundred thousand dollar budget shortfall is today, but if we were to have another student come on board, enroll with Tivonan, and be part of statewide transportation, that number could grow. Um, next is our health and medical premiums, over the last four fiscal years, our medical premiums in FY twenty-two were one percent, FY twenty-three were one percent, FY twenty-four were eight percent, and FY twenty-five has increased to twelve percent, with utilization, I'm looking at really a fifteen percent increase, that's the pattern we're seeing right now, so even with the budgetary number that was provided by Rhode Island Trust, um, our, our carrier, um, we're projecting a budget shortfall of another three hundred thousand, and again, I'm only showing four hundred thousand, but I'm giving you all the numbers because we were able to cover some of this cost in our budget, and I'll get to that in a little bit, um, we already spoke about HVAC repairs, um, this is part of the budget shortfall that continues, and lastly is just special education areas, we had an uptick in IEPs, five oh four plans, that, um, increased certain areas such as contracted nurse services, again, these are mandated costs that we have no option but to provide to our students, and, and really pay the bill, um. So with that said, I, I just want it known, there was something said last night at town council meeting, I just want it known, um, on record, if, if this ever has to be discussed, and I hope we do discuss this potential deficit, we, we have to per Rhode Island general law with the town council, but, um, with the school committee's, uh, permission, I would be available to, um, speak to these, um, unexpected costs and these budget shortfalls, um, anytime, uh, per request, um, so I, I definitely don't want anyone thinking the schools are choosing to spend more money than they're allocated, these are just unfortunate situations where everything I read today was basically majority mandated, and we have no choice but to pay the bill. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Brendan. Um, thank you for bringing up the statewide transportation, um, commission at the State House, I too have been monitoring their meetings, thank goodness, they, they do post them online, too.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of familiar faces on that board, i- including our legislators from Portsmouth, as well as, um, the school committee chair from Portsmouth, and, uh, a member of our, a former member of our town council, Mr. Burke, um, he, he was at the, at the meeting yesterday, and you're right, it is very informative, there's a lot to it.
Absolutely.
Um, but at the end of the day, um, something needs to happen to improve statewide student transportation, you know, the, the comment that came up from Portsmouth was, you know, they had received, I think it was, they had two students for eighty thousand dollars on a big bus, it made no sense, right, so let's, I, I think, thankfully, that commission in earnest is going to try to find ways to save, I think they're going to also need to push for the state to try to help us, uh, shoulder some of these responsibilities, because these are, these special needs students, um, are, are, you know, it, it can make or break a district, and I know we are not the only district grappling with this.
No, if you don't mind me, um, good point, Madam Chair, is, uh, I know about eight districts that are grappling this, the one that comes to mind is Lincoln, because they started off the year in September with a six hundred thousand dollar deficit, and the reason I bring that up is because Mario Correno, who's, um, chief operating officer of Ride, is also on that committee, and a, a Lincoln School Committee member.
And he's also participating.
Yes.
Like I said, same people you see everywhere, which is good, um, and, and the other thing I wanted to mention, um, speaking to the fact that this is the first time our schools are looking at a potential actual deficit, uh, just to be clear, we have been struggling with a structural deficit for several years now, um, and we have been managing to maintain our budgets using one-time funds, and certainly, one-time funds during the COVID era were plentiful, they're now gone, um, and what we've seen here is unexpected budgetary activities, as we saw at the end of twenty twenty-four, you know, took our fund balance down to virtually nothing, you know, I can remember a number of years back, we were carrying about four million dollars in fund balance, um, and over the last few years, it's been ranging in the, the million-dollar range, and personally, I've always been a proponent of maintaining a piece of that fund balance in the event that we have unexpected expenses, unfortunately, we do not have that cushion available to us this year, so, and, and, you know, the health and medical premiums is what it is, again, running things so close to the margin, it, it makes it impossible, we do not have, um, any contingency funds available to us, you know, um, or, or, or any other types of reserves, um, available to us to use, so to that end, um, if you'd like, I will reach out to the town council and ask that perhaps, um, we have a, a joint meeting to start discussing this plan, like, we, you, you mentioned it needs to be, happen within thirty days, um, so let's, let's talk about it together, and, um, you know, so that everybody's on the same page with understanding the reasons for this potential deficit, as well as coming up with solutions, both in the short and long term. And that is all I have to say on that issue, does anyone else have any thoughts?
I, I have a, just want to reiterate, or just have a couple of clarifications, but I'm, anyone else want to go first? I don't, no, okay, so statewide transportation, that was the result of, um, new students to the district, and required transportation, okay?
Yep.
So, unanticipated, nothing we could have anticipated, okay?
Yeah, and to get into that one a little more, Dev, if you don't mind, is, you know, just looking at a five-year expense, we, we've always been around five, six hundred thousand, we're gonna be close to a million dollars this year, so that's how much it's increased this fiscal year alone.
And we certainly, I know every budget season, we sort of talk about that, that, you know, um, that we could be in that position, and unfortunately, this year we are, and to, um, Madam Chair's point, we don't have the, um, fund balance to cover it, but I just wanted to clarify, these are new students to the district, this is nothing we could have anticipated.
It's not just new, it could also be McKenney-Vento, where, uh, it could be a divorce or something, your parents are separated, and now the mother or father lives in Tivonan, the mother, father could live in Swansea, and now you're, you could be sharing costs with Case High School and Tivonan High School, for instance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, yep. And then the health and medical premium, just so that everyone understands, like, that's sort of caseload-based, and we estimate as best we can in May? And then things change, so, like, the ti- is, it's like the timing of when they sort of set our rates, is, is that kind of the issue, because we do our budgets so early?
Sarah could touch on this a little bit, her and her team really review this every other week, for the most part, and, and Ride sends us projections every month, but I, I don't know if it would be so much early, it's just we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
Are you talking about the health insurance?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I'm talking about the health.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. You are correct with the health, yes, so for instance, I just got a projected number from Rhode Island Trust, and they gave me five to eight percent for FY twenty-six, and this is January, we know it's gonna change, but that's our preliminary number we're gonna use now.
So we put that in the budget, and then you may find out July or August?
Right now, we're seeing fourteen to fifteen percent, so how do I take fifty percent off? That's what they're telling me, you know what I mean, so exactly, yeah.
And so, so again, not having a contingency, we're not usually able to.
Yeah, and then also you have utilization, there could be a single plan this year, they turn to a family plan next year, whatever.
And then the same issue with the contracted nurse services, that just change in needs.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, we, we try to budget, we try to anticipate, but as needs change, or as someone comes into the district, we're obviously want to, but we're providing those services, and, and we just can't always anticipate those, okay? Yep, that was my big, so you talked about the projected variance, or, uh, the six seventy, but you haven't talked about the offset in savings, am I, am I taking your thunder?
No, no, so obviously, as you guys, um, not so much taking my thunder, I kind of spoke about this last year.
Because I just want people to understand, we, yes, there were projected increases, but you've also found savings to bring that number down to three ninety-eight.
Yeah, as you saw the last couple of months, that I have done PowerPoint presentations on where we stand today, on the, on the year-to-date month balance, you kind of see those allocations occurring, and that's the savings that are occurring in each area, such as.
So through those hiring freezes, through those supply freezes, through those other things, we have managed, or you have managed, I'm not gonna say we, you have managed, your team, um, to save two hundred and seventy-two thousand, so that's what allowed us to bring that deficit down to three ninety-eight.
Yep, and, and then again, we, as I mentioned earlier, talking about heat repairs, is we have some further recommendations for the future as part of maintenance, but was the appetite, you know what I mean, we don't, we personally don't have the funding to, it's things that are needed, maybe not now, in the future, and that's things we're doing, but here we are, you know what I mean, with.
So as soon as, as a school committee, as soon as we knew there was a, there is a deficit, we have to alert the,
Governing bodies, yes.
Governing body, which is the council, we did that immediately, as soon as we knew, we, we'll come up with a plan, that doesn't mean we're gonna quit looking for savings.
No, we are still continuing looking for, so the thirty days, I, I've, um, thirty days, the reason for the thirty days, we have to come up with a plan with the town council of how we're gonna fund this, because then we have to submit that to Rhode Island Orders General and the Division of Finance Chief for approval, they have to certify it.
But I just, yeah, I guess I just want the community to realize, we're still looking, you know, we're, we're gonna keep looking every, you know, we're still gonna be looking wherever we can.
Yeah, and I, I kind of outlined that in my corrective action plan, um, but one of the things is, we, we are talking to Rhode Island Trust, for instance, to hopefully utilize OPED, um, for shortfalls for retiree benefits, so we're able to do that based on the shortfall of FY twenty-four and the projected deficit in FY twenty-five, uh, again, it's only gonna give us some money, um, we don't have, I don't have a figure today, until I speak to them on the twenty-ninth, but, you know, again, we're not only looking at savings, we are still trying to look for grants and other ways to.
And I think that was my point, is I really want people to understand how hard you're working.
Yeah.
Um, behind the scenes, um, to close this, this deficit.
Yeah, absolutely, and not just me.
And I know, I know how hard you are, because I see it, see it all.
Yeah, and there's other people, such as Danny, Peter, Sarah, Sue Craven, and the rest of the principals helping there, you know, everyone's looking for grants and whatnot.
That's it, I'm sorry, thank you, that was long, but I just thought it was important to make sure, because, you know, we get up here and we look at this, and we kind of know, and the community doesn't, so I'm trying to give as much information as I can.
So, thank you, I thought those were all very good points, um, I would also remind everyone that this shortfall represents one point one percent of our total budget, it's, you know, in, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not something we want, but it's not catastrophic either, we can get through this, um, I think what's important is for us to, you know, get through this FY twenty-five issue, and let's start looking ahead to FY twenty-six, um, as we, we start to handle our planning for that, um.
I do like the idea, Madam Chair, too, I think it's a great idea, is to have a meeting with the council so that they can ask whatever questions they have, look at the data, and get an understanding, hi, Dave.
I would prefer that, actually, because I, I, I heard a number of comments last night that were factual, not factual, um, and, and we as a school committee were not able to, you know, speak to any of those items, so let, let's talk together and, and make sure that the facts are equally understood, hi, Mr. Perry. Can you turn that on? We don't have automatic ones here.
All right, now, Dave Perry Brambleway, um, we're, a couple of the councilors are actually working behind the scenes already, we spoke to Brendan about, um, the bus situation, and we're actually looking for a lot owned by the town so we can park the buses somewhere, I know we're looking for about thirty buses, um, that have to be put someplace, uh, so we're, we're actually looking, um, and that would help you people also, by alleviating that cost of the bus.
What cost would that alleviate them?
That's for the future.
That's for the future, yes, that'd be for the next budget season.
Yeah, we're, we're, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, we're going through a, um, the bus contract is up in June, and we're starting to discuss that.
I know, last time around, first student wanted to park their buses in our middle school lot.
Yeah, that, that's not, yeah.
That didn't go over too well.
Yeah, the town council is proposing, um, if they find a piece of land, if we would.
It'll be on our property.
Okay. Cool.
That would help out.
Anything helps.
And we'll do all we can, you know, we know we're in a deficit, and, you know, I've spoke to Brendan already, and we, I, I understand where it came from, and I'll do all I can to, uh, make sure that we get it taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to add?
Just the shortfall of the one point five million, that's a one-time deal, right?
That was a FY twenty-four shortfall, correct, but it was still part of the structural deficit that Madam Chair spoke about.
Okay.
I just want to, you know, acknowledge and appreciate this discussion, and how much information you're providing to us early, I think the more we review it, the more that we discuss it, plan with town council, I think we're gonna be better poised to make the decisions we need to make earlier in the year, um, and just, if you can, give examples of, like, you spoke briefly on hiring freeze and spending freezes, like, any examples that you can share with us on that?
Yeah, so hiring freeze, we have to be a little cautious of, because, um, you know, what, say, say we have six positions out there that we're looking for, three of them would be better served in-house, because we wouldn't have to provide a vendor for mandated special education assistance that are mandated, um, spending freeze example would be, um, you know, we had a sixteen, you know, eleven teachers, sixteen total FTE cuts last year, but the middle school was taxed on that, so of course, one of the requests we received was, hey, we're taxed, we don't have as much free periods, so any way you can get us a new copier, unfortunately, no, that would be, you know, so we're, we're making critical decisions that, you know, really, you know, hurt the staff, but it, it's, you know, again, we're making those hard decisions, um, the only spending we're allowing to happen is curriculum and graduation requirements, uh, the best thing that comes to mind, if there's a science project and they're dissecting an animal, you need certain disposables to get rid of that, we have no option but to pay for that, you know what I mean, um, and so on.
Thank you, and thank you for putting all this information together and, and being proactive on this, thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to move on to the next topic, FY twenty-six, general budget overview. Mr. Andrade.
Am I up again?
You are up.
You said, you're a busy, you're busy tonight.
We're gonna do a lot of talking about budgets over the next couple of months, so.
All right.
Get ready.
So I do have a PowerPoint on this, uh, Mako's gonna share, um, in your packet, you have a one page that's gonna basically explain the PowerPoint, but Mako, you can go to the next, yep, there we go, um, any way you can make it a tad bigger, Mako, is that possible?
No, we do not. And Brendan, anything you show on the screen in the future, we need to have copies of. Please.
It's just helpful, like, if you're gonna meet on a Tuesday, to be able to, like, maybe spend your Sundays looking at.
Yeah, I, um.
No, it's totally within.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I made this today, so. Yeah, 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 it's, it's the same as the page, but I agree with you, so, basically what it's showing is, so basically what it's showing is, the first line is our local appropriation, that is what we receive from the town appropriation, so, and if.
Just a little.
So this is our, uh, four percent request, which is about one point one three, one point one three zero, um, million, so one point one million, the next is the state aid, um, based on enrollment and other, um, other webinars, seminars that I've been involved in with Ride, we're hoping to stay level, um, for various reasons, so basically, we're showing level, level funding for state aid in FY twenty, uh, twenty-six.
So basically, we're showing level, level funding for state aid in FY '26. There's a little typo there, I apologize. So that's, should say, the first column should say FY '25 adopted budget, and the next column should say FY '26.
I was going to say, I'm confused.
Yeah, yeah, my apologies. So FY '25 adopted budget and FY '26 proposed budget. So again, for 28.2 million was what the town gave us in this year, and we're asking for 29 point, almost 29.4, which is the 4% that we can request. State, state aid luckily stays level, so that doesn't confuse anyone. And then going down to the next line, which is in bold, and it says sources on the left, because the PowerPoint's a little cut off, it starts with 1.6 million. So again, that 1.6 million is all one-time funds. It's the sale of the Warren Street property, it's Medicaid, the little bit of fund balance that we have remaining in FY '25, grants, and some tuition we receive through CTE and those avenues. The next number is the 748,000. What makes up that 748 is, again, the CTE tuition estimates, along with Medicaid reimbursement of 200,000 that we hope the school committee will take advantage of to utilize in FY '26, and with the hope that the town council is generous enough to provide 318,000 for technology and textbooks for items that have a useful life longer than 12 and 24 months. So typical capital items you would see is longer than 12 months. So, so in the end, the last, the last number is FY '25, as Deb said earlier when we were reviewing documents, is, the adopted budget is 35.7 million. The revenue for FY '26 would be about 35, almost $36 million. So really, it's year-over-year 1% increase of what we're seeing based on structural deficit and one-time funds being utilized. Go to the next slide, Mako.
So this gives a high-level overview of what we see right now in very preliminary FY ' '26 budget review. But if we were to show you level service, basically rolling everything over from this year to next, using the same amount of staffing and increases to step-in lane changes and those type of items, literally just rolling everything over, our budget, level service budget would be about 37.6 million. With proposed revenue of 35.6 million, we're looking at a deficit of 1.6 million. We have proposed initial cuts, mostly in personnel, of about, almost 650,000, with a newest proposed deficit of 1 million. So essentially, the deficit is really mostly in personnel, as we know, because personnel and those other mandated costs make up about 95% of our budget. But I also want to reiterate the town capital request in the first slide I showed of 318,000.
Is that 318,000, the same exact request only higher, or does that include additional items?
It's not the exact request.
Because last year's was 286.
286. Some of that was similar requests as far as Chromebooks, that's probably the majority, about 150, 140,000 of its Chromebooks. But some of that is increase in the software that was, the technology softwares that were included in that request last year, including, there is some other textbooks that need to be bought this year, probably a difference of 20 to 30,000 in textbooks.
Okay. The other comment that I will make is this term level service. This is a term that has gotten us into hot water in previous years. Our requests have never been more than 4%. This term level service is what we're saying we would need in order to continue our operations' status quo, meaning no layoffs, raises, and obvious continued investments in technology. What we're seeing here is that we're looking at a $1.65 million starting hole this year. And you've already taken the initiative to start identifying some cuts. Right now, we're looking at best a million-dollar hole after those cuts. And that is where we are going to need to focus our efforts. We are not going to be asking for $37 million for those in the back of the room. Our requests will not exceed 4% because that is by law the maximum we can request. That's, you know, I asked Brendan to put this on our agenda this evening, to start having this discussion. We will, at our next meeting, start diving in to some of the individual departments and what their needs will be, very much as we always have. And I believe, Dr. Sanchi, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be technology and special ed up first.
Technology, special ed, and transportation.
And transportation, thank you. So when we meet again on the 28th, we will spend a significant amount of time going into depth on those three topics as part of the FY '26 budget discussion. Does anyone have any other questions, comments?
No, let others go first.
I don't think there is anyone, Deb. Go ahead.
So the 35, 980, 417 versus our budget right now of 35, 790, 261 is only $190,000 change. I just, that, that's not even 1%, it's .005. That, that's, it, that is that, that's because of the loss of the one-time fund use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And state aid?
And.
Well, but we're saying state aid's level.
Right, but the big hit we took last year.
And, you know, recognizing that we have not gained enrollment-wise this year.
Right. I'm just saying, even, you know, you know, things go up, costs go up, whatever, transportation.
Way up.
Everything.
You know, everything, salaries, whatever. And that we're, we're only year-to-year, we're looking at 190,000, essentially.
Yeah.
And then I want to reiterate, and maybe we can think of a better word, that, you know, sometimes that level service gets thrown out there and people think that's what we're going to ask. And, and I don't know if it's, I mean, it's, it's essentially Diane explained, it's a starting point, we have to start somewhere. So we know who's here now, and we know what the left, the increases steps, lanes, et cetera. And, and so we have to start somewhere to know what we, we're going to need to cut. So I just want people to understand that that's what that is. I don't know if there's a better word, but as long as, I think as long as we explain it to, like, the council and people, that, you know, we're not, we're, you know, we know we're not going to ask for that, but we have to start somewhere. You have to know what you're going to cut to get to the revenue, so we have to start with what we have now and then work to that. And even that, just the 37, 635, 422, that's only a 5% increase from last year, and we're basically going to have to cut all of it. So not an easy task, but I, and again, we'll, we'll be going over those proposed expense cuts, yes, at some point, I'm assuming?
Yes, we will. We'll talk about that.
Okay.
Can I also ask, do we have an idea of when we will receive our first state aid estimate?
I think the last correspondence I received was, I think we would get a prelim around March, if I'm correct.
Didn't we have it much sooner last year?
That was what I heard.
But the projected revenue's down, so they're delaying it this year.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think because of the state of Rhode Island deficit they're dealing with, they're delaying it.
Well, it all goes downhill, right?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Okay. And I also want to remind you and everyone else, we have two union negotiations that we're about to enter into. And that has an impact on our finances as well. At this point, it's an unknown, but just to put it out there that, you know, we do have contracts that we do need to negotiate. And we will be beginning those efforts very shortly. Anything else?
That's all I had, thanks.
Kim?
Just making sure, making sense of the numbers.
Just want to point out, if we're not getting state aid info until March, but we also have to submit our budget in March, too.
We'll have it before then.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, they say March 1st, but it may come sooner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the end of our agenda. For our future announcements and future meetings, we have on January 22nd, which I believe is next Wednesday, a health and wellness subcommittee meeting scheduled for 5:00 p.m. here, here at the library. January 28th, policy subcommittee meeting at 6:00 p.m., preceding our school committee meeting at 7:00. And January 28th, again, our regular school committee meeting at 7:00. As discussed tonight, we will be submitting to the town council for consideration, those caper requests on the 27th. And obviously, I'll be in touch with the town on, you know, how they want to approach this collaboration on the deficit discussion. So we may have additional meetings coming. And then again, February 11th, which would be our normal recurrence for, for another school committee meeting. So I will now take us to move into executive session. Do I have a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246 5A2 Workshop on Collective Bargaining Regarding Council 94 Memorandum of Agreement and Rhode Island General Law 4246 5A2 Legal Advice on the FY '26 and '25 Budgets? Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion already from Kim.
Oops, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Didn't hear you.
No, thank you. Justin?
Yes. Oh, second.
It's a yes.
It's a yes.
Yes.
Or no?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Thank you.
Do you want to do finance on the 11th?